This meeting now is in session. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for all in attendance. Today's special meeting, Friday, August 10th, 2018, at 9:00 a.m., Community Center here at 3500 Edgewater Drive, Sebring, Florida. Please turn off or silence your phone. The next regular scheduled meeting is for Friday, August 31st, 2018, at 9 o'clock, at this Community Center, 3500 Edgewater Drive, Sebring, Florida. Before we get into the agenda, I have a couple housecleaning things I'd like to do. It's a pretty limited agenda, which is great. I've got, several people have asked me, contacted me various methods, why special meetings? And how does it happen? It's pretty simple. When a supervisor wants to revisit possibly a consensus, he has that ability to do it. It doesn't have to be an officer, i.e. it doesn't have to be the President, it doesn't have to be the Vice President. It only requires that a second member of the Board approve it. So that's how we're here today. Now, the next part is, why are we having this? I think most of you people have been in these meetings over the last several months, and we've discussed various types of golf rates. And there's been a lot of discussion, and we've tried to come up with a methodology that we thought would be fair and equitable to everybody. And it would also be the ability to say to somebody, if they asked you, "How did you arrive at this rate?", we would be able to say, "This is the process by which we follow." For whatever reason, we couldn't seem to come to a consensus, and on the July 20th meeting, we did have what was apparently a consensus of a 3 to 2 vote to accept a proposal, okay? Apparently after that, some people rethought and said, "Maybe there's a better way to do this." Therefore, that's why we're here, having a special meeting. So what we're going to do today is, a few people here that have some ideas and presentations on the golf rates. The intent is to adopt today a consensus for the August 31st meeting, where the public will appear, and we can come up with a final rate so that the golf operations can, in fact, send out their packages to the membership. So that's our goal today. The only other part of this is, I would like to ask a few questions, or make a few statements. One is, if there's ever any time we get a package in the mail for our Board meetings, if any supervisor has questions on what's in that package, I would appreciate if he would go forward to the district or the appropriate people and say, and question it. Therefore, it might be something that we would take off the agenda. I don't know. Secondly, when the Board makes a consensus, that isn't a final vote, but it certainly is a suggestion to go in a particular direction. So if it's a 3 to 2 vote, for, I'll take an example, for a particular item, then we should probably carry that forward unless there's a compelling reason why we need to change it. So, once again, I ask that if the district comes up with a new proposal, they poll the Board to make sure that they understand it, and if it's something that the Board wants, then we'll include it in the package. If it's something the Board doesn't want, we'll exclude it, okay? Now, I don't know who else is going to present. I believe it's, you're going to present something, right?
Sure.
And Ray, you have, you sent out some information to present, correct?
Yes.
Do you have anything to present? Joe, do you have anything to present?
No.
Okay. I did put something together, but after looking at their agenda, or what their items were, I feel that, you know, mine was redundant. So anyway, I'll turn it over to you, Dan.
I guess I'm to blame for calling this meeting. After the last meeting, we, in essence, didn't give a lot of credence to Proposal Number Two because of, in my opinion, a lack of communication of how we got where we got. To me, we have a battle of spreadsheets going, which is kind of ridiculous, if you want to know the truth, in my opinion. I don't care which spreadsheet we use, I don't care which one we look at, what I would like to ask the members of the Board to do is, let's look at each individual category and make sure that we are comfortable with the relationship to the full membership, and then the increases that that causes. I don't feel comfortable, I'll just tell you my personal opinion, I don't feel comfortable increasing anybody's dues more than we increase the full family dues as a gross amount. And some of these categories had the result of doing that, and that made me uncomfortable. That's the reason I asked Tanya and Mark if we could have this meeting again. So what I would like to do is, I don't have anything to present, I would just like to ask us to go through them on an individual basis. I don't care if we use Ray's spreadsheet, I don't care if we use Omar's spreadsheet, I don't care who came up with the spreadsheet. I just think we need to figure out what's in the best interest of our members and in the interest of Sun and Lake, and go forward.
Thank you.
I mean, I don't care, they're basically the same spreadsheets.
Pretty much.
So, I mean, we can work with anyone, either one you want, I don't really care one way or the other. I think we have to make a decision on what we're trying to achieve here. Do we want to have a methodology? And if so, then we should go with that thought process in mind when we go through these. If we complete a methodology, and we want to look to have increases over last year's rates, the increases, I feel, have to be across the board, percentage-wise, otherwise you lose your methodology right away. So whether it's, you know, and 5% seemed to be a number that we were kicking around from the very beginning, you know, if we decide it's only going to be 2% or 1%, because we're concerned over the amount of money that we're raising, I think that's fine. So, basically what I'm saying is, if we can live with those kind of conditions, let's go through it line by line, and I think we're good, as far as what we're trying to achieve.
Can you comment, Ray?
No.
Can you comment, Joe?
No, I'm fully in agreement.
Yeah, and as I looked at them, I was in full agreement with what both Ray and Dan said. I can go with honestly any of these proposals. As I said, I took Proposal One, I took Proposal Two, then I took my own personal proposal, and I took Ray's proposal, and I highlighted each of the areas and said, "Okay." They all come within a very close revenue dollar, so it's not a revenue thing that we're looking at. My thought process was, as I kind of stated at the beginning, my thought process, as long as we have a consistent way of explaining to people how we arrive at a particular rate, that's kind of my goal. And I think that the reason for some of the disparities between certain age categories is, they are paying considerably less in certain categories than they are at the family 50 to 80 rate, or 50 to 79. So I thought the attempt was to try to bring those more in line, and the only way I see that happening is to increase some people more than others. And the ones that would be increased the most are the ones that are paying the least. That's all. So whoever wants to run with this in terms of the spreadsheet, if you guys have an idea you want to try to plug in numbers, or how you want to do this...
There's only three things to decide. If we agree with the percentages, with the exception of what's in the red, because the red's highlighted for a reason, I guess, I don't know, which I happen to agree with. The question is, on the family over 80, and the over 80 people and the over 85 people, what is our goal? We probably can't get them there in one year, because it's too much of an increase. We already figured that part out. But if 20% is the right number, and that 30 has to become 20, so we say, "Okay, it's going to be two or three years." We can't get them there for another two or three years, and we'll look at it each year and decide how much closer we're going to get them to that 20%. And it'd be the same thing with the family over 85. If we think 30% is right, maybe it's two or three years to get them there, because we don't want to have them going up for $500 at a shot. And that's fine, I don't think anybody would argue with that. So if, if, those are the only percentages, I mean, I think those percentages the way they are are fine, realizing that those two red ones eventually have to catch up to the 20 and 30.
Right.
That would be my personal opinion, I don't know how you guys feel about it.
Well, this does everything we were attempting to do. Number one, it increases the overall revenue, which we know we have to do. Number two, it brings the over 80 and over 85 memberships up to an acceptable level for this year, and we know we have to do that because of our aging membership and the potential for a huge hit over the next three years. It meets Dan's criteria of having no increase larger in terms of dollars than the full family 50 and older. So it's simply a refinement of, in my mind, it's a refinement of where we were, and it's logical, and I think it's just fine, exactly as we have it presented.
We're just talking that one column, because I don't agree with the rest of it.
What do you mean?
Well, as I said, that yellow column, if we agree those are the right percentages, then you've established a methodology. You can't then go to increases, which is third from the right, and have those all mixed up, vary them. If you vary them, you've lost your methodology right away. So that third column from the right has got to be the same percent across the board to maintain the methodology. Otherwise, you've just defeated everything you did in the...
That's, that's once you get there.
Pardon me?
That is once you get there.
Yeah, once you've gotten to that point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The increase in the second column is what is necessary, the third and second column from the right, is what's necessarily to get you to the percentage.
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah, so next year, if you go ahead and set this Proposal Two, if you do a 2% increase to the full family, everybody gets a 2% at that baseline. But this is the first year, it's going to be off?
No.
No, it's not, it is not.
Why would it be off?
I think this year is off on, it's not a straight percentage across the board, because you're getting reallocations in line.
No. If you're going to set the methodology, you're putting yourself in a position to go forward now, not to go forward next year. Why would I want to change, why even do the methodology if you're going to have different percentage increases?
Well, I'm saying, next year you won't have that issue. Once you set the methodology...
But why do we have to, why can't we do it this year?
Because there's so, those disparities are there. You're making the change, if you look at this first line here...
Wait, put mine up for a minute, just put, can you put mine up?
I don't understand, I mean, I basically have exactly the same percentages that Dan had on this.
Right, you go to 5%.
All I'm saying is, you know, I put 5%, can you change that to 3%?
Right. What I'm saying is, if you take your full new rate here, and compare it to the current rate, it's going to be more than 5%.
It sounds like what you...
I know, but you don't have that, you don't have that built in. You're taking the difference between this rate and your new allocation rate. Mine, take it from the current rate to the new allocation rate. See the difference? I'm not using the current...
I don't see the difference. I don't know why we have to do methodology...
So my increase is based off the current rate, not this new baseline percentage.
Correct.
So if I made it off the baseline percentage, it would be a 5% across the board. But I built it into the current rate. Next year, your current rates will be based off of your methodology. This year, they're not.
They will be if you do that right now.
That's what I'm saying, all I have to do is change the spreadsheet.
The percentages don't change, is that correct? Will the percentages change?
The percentages won't change next year.
Will the percentages change?
So right now, this says 1% right here.
No, I'm telling you, you're wrong. I don't give a damn what you are, you're wrong.
Okay.
If it's 30%, if the full single over 50 is 30%, it's still 30% at the, with the increase amount, or the...
Yeah, I'm not questioning the 30%, I'm questioning the percent increase.
But that's what you're doing, the increase is still going to be 30%.
This isn't 5% of 3158. You're not increasing that 50%, I mean 5%, you're increasing that 1%. This year, next year, if there's a 1% increase...
You want to wait till next year to get it right?
All of us will go with 1%.
I don't understand why, wait till next year to get it right. I'm done, okay?
Let me, one second. And I, if, if you, can you just go back to his for a moment?
Yeah.
Okay, what he did is, he established that percentage is the same percentage down the line, with the exception of the 30%, was it, Ray? Oh, no, you left it at 30, the 30 and 20.
I think it's the same percentage as Dan's.
Yeah, that's exactly the same, and then he went in, then he went in and did an increase under the blue column of 5% across the board.
No, he only did it to the full family.
I'm sorry?
You only affected the full family rate. You didn't affect all of them, 5%. Your allocations are what set the increases across the board.
Well, I meant to do, I didn't check the flowchart out, I assumed that was the right formula. The increase to 5% was supposed to be...
5% only affects this 4570, full family rate. Then everything else falls in line based off the percentage discounts. You're not saying the full family under 50 is going up 5%. You're saying it's a 40% discount. So once again, just because you have 5% doesn't mean every category is going up 5%. It's going off the allocation percentage discount you set.
I'm sorry, take the 2611.85, you're going to get 2742.
Right, you've done it in two steps.
You're going to get the 5%.
You've done it in two steps, correct.
You've done it in two steps.
That's what I'm saying, you're going from current rate to method allocation to a new rate.
Exactly.
What I'm saying is...
The problem I have with that is that you're telling the single executive under 50, his rate's going up 300 and something dollars this year.
Right.
Because you've given him two increases.
Once the methodology is established, I'm taking 5% on top of that. Now, that 5%, we can argue that, maybe it should be 2, maybe, I don't know what it should be.
I'm okay with the 5, I'm just saying you can't go up twice, and that's what we're in essence doing, you're taking them from where they are to your 40% plus 5%.
Right.
But the end result is really, however you get to that point, it's how much of the increase that we need to be looking at.
Right, and his, so he contemplates 318.67, which I don't, I don't see how we can do that.
If that is the objection, is 318 dollars, then, you know, we'll, we won't get anywhere on this.
What single executive...
And I'm not saying one way or another, I'm just saying, if, if the objection is that we're going to go up 292 dollars on the executive family, and we're going to go up 318 dollars, and all the rest of the numbers, the 218 down at the over 80, the minus on the, on the, some of the memberships down, the only one that is really, I see really are, is the executives. They're the only ones that are really high. Now you brought in, now you brought in...
We'll just change the baseline.
Just change that 40% to...
Change, and that might...
This one's at 45, and you don't have that large increase.
All right, so make it 45.
The question is...
Go back to my sheet, go back to my sheet.
Plug it in and see what happens, and it will reduce that 318 dollars down to something maybe more reasonable.
That's what we're supposed to do.
No, the spreadsheet's only a tool, it really doesn't make any difference. What we need to figure out is, how much of a discount you're giving...
Right, just that you need to agree whether it's 40 or 45, that's it.
And you can use either spreadsheet you want to do.
Yeah. They all work the same.
Yeah, if that's all you got to fix is those two lines, that's simple.
I think that's it.
Yeah.
If, if I'm following what Dan's saying, are those two numbers are a problem, right?
Yeah.
Those two numbers are a problem, or if you use the other spreadsheet, there's a problem with the over 85. If you change that number to 40%, then you got it back in line. Whichever one you want to go on, it doesn't matter.
Well, the sheets were basically the same, except you got to change that increase.
So you want this, you said you want to keep it at 45, right?
You're not using his spreadsheet, though.
You're not using Ray's spreadsheet.
You're not using Ray's spreadsheet, so what's happening is, your numbers of the increase amounts are different, because you have a 10% increase, a 3% increase, and so on.
Right.
Once again, I'm cutting that off the current rate, so if you want me to make this off...
Can you just pull more in?
Nope, just pull his up.
Where is his?
His increase is pulled up.
I can email it to you, I have it on my iPad.
He had it up?
It doesn't, no. You can use either one, it doesn't matter, but...
He had it up, too.
So you want to make this 45, 45, there you go.
Okay, now we just knocked that down to...
63 and 65.
63 dollars and 158 dollars.
I mean, I'm okay with those, other than you have to, I mean, logically, you wouldn't charge somebody 4570 dollars and 65 cents, or whatever that is, you'd make it 4570 or 4575.
Rounding it off.
Exactly.
Yeah, what's the revenue at the bottom line there? Is it 108, roughly?
It was.
A million, a million and a half.
I mean, a million eight, a million, okay, it's close to a million eight. Is that something you can work with, Cliff?
Yes.
I mean, I would add on the tax and then round it off, don't round it off without adding the tax.
I wouldn't round them off, I'd just do the tax and let them be what they are.
Yeah, that's what I...
Every time we do that, we get skewed numbers.
Okay, well then...
You're going to write a check, it doesn't hurt you to write a check for some sense.
But, I mean, again, do you guys agree that we have to get the 80s?
No, I would not, I would...
Do you guys agree that we have to get the 80s to a 20% eventually, and the 85s to a 30%? Because that's what I'm leaning towards.
Yeah.
I believe that, in my, and that, just my opinion, I would like to see that go up slowly, I don't want to see them get here all at once, I don't think that's fair.
If you did it in two years, it's 258 dollars each year. So if you did it in three years, well, you know, you can stretch it out as long, as many years as we think is necessary, if we don't want to give everybody a big increase.
Well, but the thing is, in three years, you're going to be...
Yeah, the increase is...
Everybody's going to turn 80.
The increase is on top of an increase. So you're in essence going at 5% plus the increase to get them up to where you want them to be. That's the only, that's the only objection I have.
That's this year, though, after that...
But it'd be next year, too, if you only do 40, go to, take the 40 this year, and you want to go to 39 next year, you're going to continue to have this issue, you're just going to have to spread it out over term.
But wouldn't you change the increase on the individual categories, then, to match...
I...
In other words, where he has that blue column, that increase would not be straight 5% down the board, it might be 5, 6, and 7, or something of that nature. And that will keep your balance, I think.
No, you got to have, it's always, that, that one number, if you want to control, keep your methodology, it's always got to be consistent all the way down. Doesn't have to be 5, it could be 2. It doesn't have to be anything, it could be 0. Nobody says we have to take an increase every year, either.
I have that discussion offline, I don't agree with that.
Well, you do if you, if you make the offline percentage, the flexible number, the ones that were highlighted in red on the other spreadsheet. Scroll down just a little bit, Omar.
Oh, the percentages and percentage base rate?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so as long as you're willing in the future to adjust those further, then, then your straight 5% will be...
Then your 5% will be...
Yeah. So that's all you're looking at doing, is saying, you know, everything here is fixed, except for two numbers, and we know those are going to change again at least one more year and possibly two, depending on how we want to allocate the increases.
Exactly.
And at that point, you know, I don't know...
Quite rightly, I think we came to a solution here.
Yeah.
Everybody, everybody look at it.
The other question I'll throw out on this, do we want to go 5% this year?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm just asking. I've had some people tell me that it was a little high.
Well...
That's why I'm bringing it up.
Well, I think anybody that takes an honest look at the golf courses and the money we've spent to get them into the shape they're in, and we will continue to spend, 5% is a, probably not even high enough. Frankly, it's, it's a lot better than it has been ever, and I think if we're going to continue that, we have to continue to charge for it. It's kind of the point of doing what we're doing.
Absolutely. I totally, 100% agree with what you just said. You know, people, you're going to always get somebody that will object to an increase of anything on anything. At the same time, a lot of those same people are saying how great the course is, and it didn't get that way without doing a lot of work and spending some money.
But keep in mind, I believe the number is, for every percent, isn't this what we were told, for every percent we go up, it's approximately $10,000 worth of an increase in memberships.
Revenue.
And if we go up, I mean, $10,000 is not going to solve any of our problems, or challenges.
Right.
We have to figure out another way to get the monies that we need to accomplish what we want to accomplish. I mean, you know, we can go up 10,000 all the time, it's only, it just is not going to cover the cost of doing a lot of things that we want to do.
For today's discussion, I think all we're trying to do is get the rates established, not figure out where we're going to get additional revenue in the future.
No, I understand, I was just pointing it out.
Okay. You know, but I would, I would certainly, my position is, I could agree with that, I don't know about the others. I also would like to, I'll probably get killed on this one. I look back at the memberships over the last 10 years, and Cliff wasn't here, so a lot of people aren't here, they don't know the background, but we didn't have 12 or 14 different memberships, okay? There's some in there that have two or three players or members. I'm, I'm, I'm good in promoting golf for youth under 18, but for 200, or 319 dollars, if it goes up to that, we have two, that's a pretty good deal to be able to play golf all year, but 320 dollars. I'm not even sure that we need to have that membership in there, this is just a thought. I'm not sure that we need to have summer memberships in there, since we only have two of those. Maybe it would be better off if people used the play cards. So, just for future, maybe that's something, you might want to clean up that rate sheet and say, "Do I really need those in there?"
Yeah, I think that's something we should look at, and I also think we need to know, for example, the junior executive, does that include a trail fee? Do they get to use a cart for free?
I can tell you, the juniors get a cart, and the issue with the junior is, if you're not licensed, you can't take the golf cart.
I guess my point is, we're, we're calling our trail fee basically 1,000 bucks, but we've got junior memberships that are less than 1,000 bucks, that...
Get a trail...
Get a trail, I mean, logically, that doesn't make sense, it should be a minimum of at least a trail fee.
And not to go, to get far off point, I only mention those two memberships, and people with a lot more experience than I, in family memberships a lot of times, that's just an add-on item if you have an 18-year-old and under. The way you would check off the box and say, "Okay, I have a family membership, it's 4,000 dollars, I have a child, I will add that to it, that's 500 dollars," and that's how they come up with the totals. So you don't have to have all of these different categories, you just have a checkbox and say, "Under 18?", you add them on. Like I said, there's a lot of different thoughts on that.
I think we could ask Billy Kasper Golf to figure that one out, as opposed to us having to do it in an open meeting.
You know, we've gone the one-month membership, plus that, you know, that was, that was a revenue killer, so...
I'm, I guess I'm, I really haven't thought about it as much, really, but really, my first impression is, I totally agree. 770, or 799 for that junior executive membership, I mean, that's less than the trail fee. And we're really only talking about three, three memberships. I would bet, I would need to do some research, but I would bet that one or two, or maybe all of those people are connected to a family membership, so I think, yeah, I wouldn't mind if you, if you guys decided to get rid of all three of those memberships. The summer membership is, is probably a nice thing to kind of yield manage, I just, my, my thing with the summer membership, I just didn't like any advertising dollars going to it, it's just, why spend so much money when we only made, what, yeah, 1,500 bucks? And we probably spent that entire profit just trying to advertise those memberships, so...
Don't, don't...
Whatever, I would be comfortable with whatever you'd like to do with those three Whatever, I, I would be comfortable with whatever you'd like to do with those three memberships.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not looking personally to change that this year, I think it's something that maybe we should, I would just want to get this thing so you guys can publish it.
Yeah.
Advertise it, have our meeting on the thirty-first, and either adopt it, or.
Well, yeah, I mean, if we want to put that on the back burner, but, but I'm, I'm really okay with massaging or deleting all three of those membership types.
All the question.
Basically, what we need to do now is Omar needs to put this in a sheet where we can, we don't need all that information out to the public, we have to get it in a format that we can advertise.
Okay, I understand.
So my next question is, everybody's in agreement with the numbers there in the new rate base there?
Yes.
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 Okay, so we have a consensus, correct? It's not a vote, it's a consensus.
Until when?
It is a consensus, it will not change.
Until the thirty-first.
Please, okay, so, and we will have that meeting on the thirty-first, okay? Is there any further board discussion?
Whoa, 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 wait a minute. Can't we finalize this today and be done with it?
That's what I said, but we gotta get public comment.
Okay, all right. You said the next board meeting.
No, the next board meeting, it will be a resolution in a public forum, correct?
So, so can I clarify some direction a little bit? So by the next board meeting, you'd like a Billy Casper recommendation about those other three memberships, correct?
No, I'm saying, put it on the back burner, think about it, I don't want to delay this any further.
Right.
Next budget, next year.
Put it in, next nineteen and twenty fiscal year.
Okay.
Okay, no. Unless we have some objections from our public here, or better suggestions, that's kind of the direction I want, I want to go, okay? Public comment. Wow, oh, I knew it.
Good morning, Bill Norcross, a resident for almost fifteen years here. I tell you, the problem I have with any rate increases, the history of the course here, and the courses, and the poor conditions that have existed vary for the last twelve, thirteen years. We've suffered through bad greens, living in trailers for a couple of years, bad, bad situations, wasted broken material, wasted money on equipment, like fly motors and stuff like that, we buy, and we're not used. The problem I can't understand, because, I'm sorry, I'm not a CPA here, but, you know, you have a budget, and I'm looking at last year, and you were nine thousand dollars, three hundred dollars ahead. Now you want to spend more money, you want to, I, it just, I can't understand why, when you have a positives two thousand and seventeen budget, and why the expenses have gone through the roof, that we have to have an increase. I can see a small increase, Larry Bryan, Larry White, rather, said a few years ago, he wanted a ten percent increase, he got six. Now we want five, so that's eleven percent in a short period of time. People say there hasn't been an increase, but there has. We, the general public here, there's not too many people here, but they're facing fire assessments, district increases, now golf membership rate, a couple of, two hundred and seventeen dollars for a family membership. I think that, I think it could be reduced to an acceptable rate, maybe three percent, maybe do three percent in two years, that's six percent in three years. I cannot see the justification, it hasn't been explained to me, why we have to have the increase. Is it cost of labor, cost of equipment, paying for the maintenance area? What is the cost, what's the reason for the cost increase, when last year, looking at the budget, everything looked fine?
I don't think this is a question and answer thing, Bill, just tell us what you feel.
Well, that's, that's public comment, I mean, we can't ask you in a, in another setting, without getting a legitimate answer, and maybe a more authoritative type of answer, why?
I'll go out on a limb on this, it isn't a Q, it is not a Q and A, but I'll go out on a limb. Everyone has said that, in the case of the courses, they have increased considerably over the last several years, as far as they are better, they are maintained much better, aesthetically, they're better, and so on. All of those things, we didn't have last year, the aesthetics of the shell, we didn't have the aesthetics of the pine star, we didn't, those all cost some money, okay? Labor, I can't speak to labor, maybe Cliff could, but I'm sure labor has also gone up, traditionally does over the years. Equipment, yeah, we buy our new equipment. To maintain the course at the level that our, our community wants, is going to cost us a few extra dollars. Two hundred and seventeen dollars, yeah, I'm not saying that's a small amount, but over the, over a hundred rounds, that's two dollars and seven, two dollars and seventeen cents? I think it's worth that, I don't know, that's just, there are expenses here, you know, and like I said, I went out on a limb, and, just to try to help explain, because I think you do deserve an explanation.
Well, I'm just trying to understand, Mark, why that it's, you had a balanced budget last year, you allocated X amount of money, you were nine thousand dollars over, and I can't understand.
We didn't have a balanced budget last year.
No, we lost, we lost money last year, we subsidized golf operations by three hundred and.
Almost four hundred thousand dollars.
Four hundred thousand dollars.
So you're not supposed to subsidize the golf course?
No, what we're saying is, with that rate, we can't sustain it long-term. The golf course has to become more financially independent than it is.
So you reduce any subsidization?
I don't have a choice.
I think what you.
Which is going up and which is going down? If you meet the budget.
That's why we don't have, respond to public comment.
If you want to talk about this individually, you'll get all the answers you want, just in the right format.
Five minutes is up.
I thought it was.
We're listening to your comment.
Any additional public comments? Charlie, no? No one? No additional public comment? Okay, let's take consensus. Because we just took public comment.
I vote for it the way it is.
Consensus is sort of vote, just a consensus. You agree, you agree, we all agree. They're gonna publish it for the next meeting, thank you. Now, to and from board discussion, anything?
Not on this particular subject, is this?
Anything, it's on anything, because I have two items, too.
Several meetings, I have said that if we're gonna proceed with this kitchen business, I want to look at a business plan. I want to define business plan. That doesn't mean to me, it has to say we're gonna make money, it doesn't mean anything other than, I don't want to be put in a position where we spend whatever number, five hundred, a million, a million, five, whatever, and not have a commitment from the people who run our operation, that this is going, not going to cost us more money. It doesn't make sense to me, and that's what I'm saying by business plan, if we're gonna spend money to build a new kitchen, to me, we have to sell more stuff, so that we don't lose more money than we're already losing. So, I just want to make sure, we've had that comment, and I've had several people say, well, I don't need, I don't need a business plan, well, yeah, we do, because I don't want to be spending a million bucks and then wind up losing fifty thousand dollars more than we're losing now. So, from a reasonableness standpoint, from a rational standpoint, it has to be a situation that we can sustain, put it that way. We're talking sustainability on the golf course, well, I think we have sustainability in the restaurant as well, so the question is, how much money are we willing to subsidize? And spending more money on the facility, without spent, without a corresponding increase in sales, really makes zero sense to me.
Did we not ask for that? Is Billy Casper not working on something?
On what?
On the business plan?
I, I, perhaps I'm wrong, but I, I just don't know if I've gotten that direction from the board yet.
I don't think so.
Okay, so the, the discussions that we had about it in the previous board meetings, nothing materialized as an action item?
No.
Okay, so, are you making that as a suggestion?
Well, can I?
Before I can vote, I'm just saying, before I can vote for spending money on a new kitchen, I'm gonna have to figure out if it makes economic sense.
Okay.
And I, and I agree with Dan, so I would like to see it taken out, because we have no clue what's going on. And then, when we do find the information, or get the information, and we decide to either go with it or not, we could possibly add it on to the budget as a budget amendment, but to leave it in there at nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars, when we have no clue what we're, what we're dealing with, does not make any sense to me. That, and I'll, I'll throw one other one in, the seven or eight-year commitment on the equipment, that we're looking to make, that we have no idea what that's gonna cost us either, but yet we have a number in the budget. I don't, I, I would take both of those out, and then when we get the information correctly, we can, we can make the adjustment.
Actually, the number we have in the budget, I think it's two hundred and two thousand, if we purchased it, and a hundred and eighty, two thousand if we lease it, that's kind of the ballpark figure.
Right.
And they're supposed to be presenting that at the next meeting, correct? The lease.
No, I, I thought that was, I thought that was voted on last meeting, and I thought that was done.
We don't have a number. We've never gotten the.
We never got a number.
I think, I thought it was like one eighty-four, seven.
No, the, the number was there, but the equipment list was never there. And he listed equipment, but he had to go back and refine that, because we were giving away brand-new equipment, and there was some concern that we were taking equipment that we bought last year, we're turning it in, and then we're putting ourselves on an eight-year commitment at, you know, X dollars.
We're trading it in.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we, we should probably take those two, two items out, until we have the actual numbers that we can decide upon, if we want to go forward or not.
We have to keep a placekeeper in there for budget, so that's, that's the only thing I see about the kitchen, we got, what, nine eighty, but that's not approved under any stretch of the imagination. I think we're close to the lease deal, but we don't know for sure and won't, until we get final bids back from them, but we have placekeepers in there. That's the way I understood it.
Do you have any, are you booked out in, for functions through this next year?
No.
There is no functions happening in June, July, or August?
There, I, I think there are a few, but not many.
Okay.
But not many.
So you're still holding off on booking any functions?
Yeah, we're still, we're still holding out, booking some smaller functions that we might be able to do in the restaurant, we, we booked a few, but.
Okay.
Larger events, we have not booked.
No, I know you've counted to the loss of revenue there anyway, in your budget.
Right. Do we know where we are on the plan, when, when they're supposed to get back to us, the architect?
I don't have a set date yet, but they are working on, on some details now, so I will have, have you an update as soon as I hear.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Any other further board discussion? I have two items I'd like to bring up. One is, since the Sunshine Law doesn't allow us to talk, this is the only place we can talk, I only, I don't want to get into a discussion about it, I just want to understand, we have something for the veterans that was sent to us, it was asked to be responded to, I have responded briefly, I don't know if anybody else has responded, if you're in acceptance of what that agreement might be or not.
Did I see that?
I emailed, you talking about the proposal, the revised proposal for the Veterans Tournament?
You solicited all, every supervisor, I saw that, supervisors, you said, attached, and then you, and what, what I, the first step is, I just want to know if every board member saw that, and how, do they, I'm not asking for, I'm just saying, do you feel comfortable with that proposal, or you don't feel comfortable with that proposal? I don't want to make this a public discussion.
The proposal said, please advise if you have any questions. I believe that's an accurate quote, so I had no questions, I didn't respond.
So you didn't respond, so by default, is that acceptance?
Sure.
We have, we have no obligation at this point, we've not committed to any numbers, is that true?
Correct.
They have not committed, and they have not signed it to.
We have not committed, we have not committed any Sun and Lakes funds at this point.
That's a different.
That is correct, it's in the.
It's in the budget, but we've not committed them.
That's correct.
It's not final.
But what he's talking about is the, is the price that they're gonna pay us for the use of the golf course, but there's two different questions.
All I'm, I guess what I'm saying is, if, if everybody's in agreement with what came out.
We normally don't even look at stuff like that, I mean, that's Billy Casper negotiating with whoever wants to have an outing, we don't approve that or disapprove it, right?
Uh, it came to the board, it.
I saw it, and I didn't have any questions.
It came around, the discussion was from four or five years ago, God rest his soul, that a commitment was made by a board member, and they have tried to eliminate that problem by kind of keeping the board out of it, and we would handle it year by year basis, and one of the approaches was, we would provide X dollars based on what their original proposal to us was, that's why we funded it, for the amount we funded it. Right now, I'm not sure, that proposal hasn't been accepted by, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
So that has not, so he's in the negotiation mode, I would assume?
I would assume he's negotiating with Cliff, I don't, he's not negotiating with us, is he?
Okay.
Two separate questions, as far as I'm concerned, do we make a contribution to the veterans, and what do we charge them for the use of our golf course? What we charge them for the use of our golf course is negotiated by Billy Casper Golf, just like anything else, as far as I'm concerned. And I saw that, and I thought, well, okay, if that's what they want to charge them, it's okay with me.
I agree with the charge, too, just to let you know.
Yeah, the charge for me, that I questioned Tanya when I met with her, because it went from twenty-eight to twenty-three, and my understanding of the whole thing was, it was supposed to be a certain percentage off of a November rate, but I know it's not in stone, and I just questioned the idea of why it went from twenty-eight to twenty-three, and I got an answer.
Are you happy with the answer?
Well, I guess that, I don't want to tiptoe on it, but I will be talking with Tanya and revisit the donation that we're giving, so that will come up.
Okay.
Uh, but the rate, until we establish, and we're gonna have to probably put it in paper, the parameters of what we want Billy Casper to, you know, because last year was, when it, when it ended up zero, was just crazy, I mean, that's not acceptable. And we, we need to have parameters, I don't want to tell Billy Casper what, but they have, they have to have a low, and that's all I really want, but if it's.
I thought that's what we did, but.
But if it's twenty-three, I did too, but I, I can't remember what we told Billy Casper, and of course, Jim's gone now.
There was a minimum established, and it was voted on by the board, that.
And I would have thought if it was twenty-eight, there's no way it could go down more if it went from morning to afternoon, but I, I don't want to, I don't want to quibble with that, I mean.
I think I, I know where you're talking, Dan, and there was something, and they are two separate, there are two separate issues here, you're absolutely correct, one is, whatever's established, that should be negotiated between, let's say, Casper, and, and based on what the board agreed to, this percentage. Now, the, the second piece to that question is providing additional monies to them.
And that's a whole different.
And even though there's a two, they're, they're separate, they aren't separate, because they're connected, and I'll tell you how they're connected. They're connected based on a volume that by making a donation, and I'm not saying I'm against it at all, and you reduce that other number for fees, you will zero out, you'll actually be losing revenue dollars in the golf operation.
Exactly.
So, we need to decide if we want the golf operations to lose money on that particular tournament, okay? Okay, if, if they, if we took the money and said, okay, give them any rate you want, and we turned around and gave the money directly to Casper, that would at least go to our bottom line instead of going to them. Okay? I, I, it's just semantics, I guess, but we need to kinda get this together. I don't wanna be, last year was the eleventh hour when we decided this, and, you know, to, to keep everybody happy, uh, it was negotiated, so-
Yeah, but, but I, I'll just say for me, the twenty-three to twenty-eight, I mean, that's fine with me, but I will be asking Tanya to reconsider, or, or talk to the supervisors about the donation and the amount.
Okay.
And that's why we're having this conversation?
Yeah.
But if we, if we give the money to Casper, and Casper in turn issues credit for that much to the tournament, I don't agree that there's no effect on the bottom line, I mean, the money is still spent, and it still ends up going to same place, so I think the only question is, are we gonna subsidize it, and to what level? Point, paragraph, where the money goes is of no consequence that I can see.
Exactly.
So is it suggesting that everybody meet individually with Tanya to express their concerns? Is that the basic, we agree with that?
And, and then what happens from there?
Then what would we do?
I mean, we've been through that, where we, we individually consult with Tanya.
Well, I would hope that Tanya is gonna carry forward the wishes of the five board members here. I would, I would hope that-
I don't, I don't like secret votes.
I think it needs to be done here, and that's what we said after the issue with the green damage a year ago.
Okay.
If we're gonna make those kind of decisions, they need to be made in this room and public, point, paragraph.
I second.
Okay, I, I have mixed feelings on airing certain things in the public, and I, and I'll give you my reason why. We open up the door to anybody and everybody to come in and try to negotiate what we settle in for a particular event. And that, that could be very dangerous. That, that's just my thought, I, I'm not saying it's right, just my thought.
They got two minutes to negotiate in this meeting, with a three-minute extension if you grant it, point, paragraph.
I just, like I said, an open forum.
It is an open-
I'm not disagreeing, maybe we have to do that, I don't know. If we can't come to some kind of closure on this, then we will.
Well, I, I don't have an issue with meeting with Tanya about it individually, and if we can't, if one of us is a million, and one of us is at zero, then obviously we have to come to a meeting.
Yes.
But I'll give you this, this is the most dysfunctional way to run a railroad I've ever seen. I can't talk to you, and I can't talk to you, and I can't talk to you, but I can talk to everybody out here, and nobody knows what the heck's going on, on this board until you walk into this room. And it's just, it's, it's like the, the old parlor game where you, you stand in a line, and one of you whispers to the one, and by the time it gets to the other one, there's no relationship to what was initially said.
That's the state of Florida. That's the state of Florida, they, they-
It's, it's, it's like controlled insanity.
Sanction laws-
But we gotta live with it, so we, we live with it, but-
Okay, well, I just thought I'd bring it up, I'll schedule time-
Aren't you glad you did that?
Wow, it was a simple question, but, okay.
So what are we doing on this subject?
We're gonna meet with Tanya.
Individually?
Yes.
Uh, you know what?
You don't have to, now you have to get more coffee. Get more coffee, okay, I have a, a second subject.
You know, we're a board, we're supposed to decide, to, to dance point, we don't see each other.
Can't.
So why would we go individually to, to Tanya when we can, we're all sitting here together in public?
I brought it up to say, does everybody agree, and nobody can seem to agree and say, this is what we wanna do. They're saying, hold it, they're saying, I don't know, if, if we agree to this rate, this twenty-three, or twenty-eight, or thirty, or whatever it happens to be, well, I'm not so sure I wanna provide the twenty-five-hundred, two separate issues. So if we agree with the rate, I agree with the rate, okay? You got my, my consensus. I agree with the rate that you put in the letter for both the meal and the golf. The only subject that I have now would be the subsidy, okay?
Yep.
Now you know where I, I stand, there should be no confusion.
So does anybody disagree with the rate?
Yes.
Huh? Michael does?
Yes.
Okay, you disagree with the rate?
No, I can live with the rate.
I don't care, I don't think that's up to us, I think that's up to Cliff.
Not, not the, not the, I, I agree with the rate for twenty-three dollars.
Okay, then we all agree with the rate?
Yes.
So that's good, so we've got that finished.
So that's done?
Yeah.
Right, now let's talk about the other part of it.
Finish, the second part, the meal, I don't care how you negotiate it, you can give it away.
No, no, you can't.
I said, I-
That's not up to us.
I said, he figures it out, his operation.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
I don't care what he negotiates.
I work off a dynamic pricing model, okay? It really, my main mission really is, at the end of the, at the end of the month, or the end of the week, I'm not coming to you guys and saying, ah, we gotta increase the subsidy, right? 'Cause I've lost money this week. Well, I mean, when I price things, whether it's on a Saturday, or whether it's on a Friday, or whether it's in August, or whether it's in January or November, the prices just need to be variable compared to what I would do if I didn't have the event.
And it's your operation, and price it accordingly.
It's gonna vary, and I, I guess I have the same issue you do about kind of airing prices in a public forum, because they vary so much, because we make different, because we charge different rates at different times of year, and even if it's at eight o'clock in the morning, or one o'clock in the afternoon, there might be a different price. The, the pricing is so variable, and there's so many issues that deal with the pricing, it's just so, I, 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 I'm just, it's difficult for me to set a price in public forum, because it's all over the place.
I don't think you should, I don't think you should be forced to. Frankly, I think it's up to you, and you do whatever you think's right.
That's why I'm saying, I'm very comfortable with what he's saying.
I mean, it's kind of up to me to set that price to, to make, I mean, it's, I mean, I, I take full responsibility for the profit of the golf course and the restaurant at the end of the day, you know, and I, I do not wanna ask for more subsidy, so, but there's, there's always that hap, that little balance that I have to walk all the time.
But you're not, there's no point in that process that you're gonna operate at a loss, so, again, I agree with you, it's not something that we need to hammer out in this meeting. We need to trust Billy Casper and not price things under cost, and I'm assuming that doesn't happen, or won't.
That doesn't happen. Well, we assumed that last year, and you see what happened, but-
He has what he needs to work with.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't think we need to be involved in that piece of it, at all.
I agree, I agree.
Okay. Thank you.
So we still have to decide about the twenty-five-hundred, or we don't talk about, I'm, I'm asking?
No, we're gonna-
We settled the one issue.
Tanya is, Tanya's gonna talk to us, Ray, on the twenty-five-hundred.
I have something on-
Individually, on the twenty-five-hundred?
I do have something to show her, I think it's, it would be remiss-
Again, I, I don't understand why we have to do things individually. We don't, to everybody's point, we don't talk to each other because we're not allowed to, but we're gonna talk to Tanya individually and not know what the other one's thinking. I mean, I don't get it. I'm sorry, I don't, I- I'll do it if that's what everybody wants to do, but I'm just telling you, I don't understand why.
Thank you.
Can I move on to my second subject?
Yes.
Thank you. The second subject, if you've been reading the paper, the summer season is a rainy season in Florida. Sebring, flooding, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Sun and Lake is no different. Sun and Lake has their problems with drainage. It seems that in the summertime, it's actually at its peak, and that's when it's most visible, and that's when the people complain the most. And I don't, I, I used the wrong word, it's not even complaint, uh, they have legitimate concerns, okay? I have tried for two years to look at a drainage program, and when I refer to a drainage program, I'm not talking about putting in just culverts. I've driven around, I've spent multiple hours, I've seen the water flow in different areas. I'm not an engineer. I've had a number of residents contact me and say, tell me which way this water is supposed to be flowing. I don't know, I go over there, I look at it, and I'm thinking, okay, maybe it should be, but it's not even moving, okay? We have situations, and let me make the analogy, you got a road that it can handle a thousand cars, and you put ten thousand cars on that road, it cannot work. We have a lot of areas where ditches, and I, I refer to them as ditches, need to be cleaned, debris needs to be removed, there's trees down in them, there is no way that the water is going to flow out of our neighborhoods. And we need to make a concerted effort, this year we put a significant amount more money in the budget for roads and drainage, or for drainage. I would like, and I met with Drew, I met with Mike, I met with George Lloyd, I met with all of them. I would like to invite Drew to come here and present the five projects, or six projects, that are now scheduled to be done throughout the district for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I trust that from an engineering standpoint, he's thought this through. I just want him to kinda explain to me why certain areas, maybe we should be putting those into phase four instead of phase three, take the money from phase three and move it into cleaning ditches, because we're never getting ahead of this problem. We're not even staying equal with it, okay? So I request that.
Understood.
Anybody have a problem with?
I thought we were putting three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in drainage specifically.
We are putting three hundred and fifty thousand, and includes culverts, and includes some ditch cleaning.
Right.
And it's a significant amount more than what we've done in the past.
Exactly.
I'm not so sure that some of the areas, it, it, you know, it's always the squeaky wheel in anything that gets the attention.
Yeah.
And we have people out there, you know, that have been living with, you know, with these water issues, and all you have to do is drive down some of these streets, and you'll see they have two-by-sixes running from the, from their roadway across the driveway because they can't get into their yards. I mean, that's a problem. And we need to clean some of these, these ditches that are being neglected, way out in the back, 'cause that's where the water flows.
I think it's a good request, but I think, I, I was under an assumption, correct me if I'm wrong, that you guys would present to us not only specifics on drainage, but I, I think we committed a lot of money to the roads.
Yeah, it is, it has been presented.
But somebody should commit and spell it out for us.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking.
But I wanna include the roads, too.
Well, the three hundred and fifty thousand, you know, I'm addressing drainage at this moment, okay?
Well, we, we committed three hundred thousand for roads.
You know, so we've got three hundred and fifty thousand here, and we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven projects on here, I'd just like to have a synopsis of what these really are, you know, cleaning and construction.
Then I'll ask for the same thing on roads in addition.
That's all I'd like to get.
Each year Drew prepares a written document with the, all the projects listed in it for the upcoming budget, so I usually receive that from him early October, end of September, once the budget is adopted. So it's a written report, and it'll be phase three for fiscal two thousand nineteen-twenty. And then in addition, he can do a presentation at a board meeting.
And I understand he does that, but he's already identified projects, I'd like to understand how he identified these projects, assuming the budget get approved for this three hundred and fifty thousand. So why do I have to wait until after the budget's approved to say, it's already approved? I'm gonna say, why can't we reallocate this, change this project, make, instead of being a priority one, which he lists one through nine on here? Maybe, maybe that shouldn't be a one, maybe it should move into the following year, and let's do some, take, allocate some money that wasn't allocated for some of these ditches outback, is all I'm saying. I wanna understand why we can't do that.
The board has the ability to do whatever they wish. I mean, if you wanna reallocate monies, or give, give more monies, however you wanna do that for a particular budget, but there are reasons why we've established those areas as priorities, but with, with eleven projects for next year, I think we're really gaining some, some headway on these drainage problems and issues. But with water tables like they are currently, there is, we're, we're fighting a battle with nature, and this has been going on, you know, since prior to Hurricane Irma, as far as water flow and other things, so we'll be glad to present that at any time.
I'm not questioning whether they're valid projects or not, I just wanna know what we're doing. You know, I don't wanna see a line item that says this, I wanna understand what is the driving force that says we have to do this particular area. I know that when Mike had his, that area on Matanzas, it was flooding back there, and they went in, they cleaned out all of that area, and it's, as far as I know, it's flowing well now, right?
Yeah.
I knew that on Columbus, right down the street from the district, it floods all across Columbus and all down Cremona in the rainy season, okay? It goes right across the street to the driving range, in fact. And I understand we're fighting nature, I'm just trying to understand, how do we pick these five or ten areas and prioritize them that way? That's all I wanna know. I'm not gonna say change it, I just wanna understand why we chose it.
Well, I think we're playing catch-up from the last ten years when no money was budgeted.
So I'll be glad to have Drew do a presentation whenever the board would like to see that, if you wanna do that at the next meeting, or-
Danny, I think we all understand why we're, you know, we're doing what we're doing because of the lack of past boards not doing it. Mark has a valid thing, I, I just think, we all look at that, even I do, and say, why's that one, and why's that eight? And I think that's probably what he wants, but just so the, the public, so, uh, we're might, we're trying to make up, and we are, I think we're doing a good job the last two, three years, in getting caught up, but it's just gonna take a while to, because we have so many problems. And he understands that, I'm sure.
Understood.
It's a valid question.
Yeah, but, and as, as my counterpart Supervisor Branson just said, all these, all we're saying is, what, what is the problem you're solving by doing this particular project? That's all we're asking. Okay, that's all I had, because I don't know, it's ten passed, I could get, yeah. Public comment? Yeah, go ahead, Charlie. Is, is, if it pertains to our discussion-
Charlie Shields, Sunrise Drive. And yes, it does.
Okay.
Okay.
What was the question?
Which discussion?
Go ahead, Charlie.
Well, one, I, this one I hadn't even thought of until you started discussing it, but I've never heard of a capital project that wasn't thought out, drawn out, told how much it was gonna cost, who was gonna manage it, and what the timetable was before you ever did it, included it in a budget into that conversation. I don't understand how you can just allocate money without knowing what the project is in there. And I think that's what you're after.
We have-
Okay, good.
We have a list.
That wasn't what I was gonna talk about, good, I'd like to see it, but-
Yeah, we have that.
What I was gonna talk about was the kitchen, okay? I wanna agree with, with, what's your name, Dan?
No.
I don't, I don't see us doing a million dollars, I'm using a figure, for a kitchen without saying where the money's gonna come from to pay for it. Not allocating what we have, but how we're gonna pay for it. At some point, if that's for the community, that kitchen is for the community, it's not just for the golf people.
No.
Right?
It's a community, it is for Sun and Lake.
When you start talking about that kind of money, you're talking about assessments, and you better start thinking about it. Because you can't spend a million, or a million and a half, and keep going into the bank account saying that we're gonna cover it. Thanks, Charlie.
Bill Nakwars, resident, on the subject you had mentioned about drainage, I completely concur with you that a comprehensive, good plan to take care of the drainage, I cannot understand why there's so much of a problem. Maybe because we got ten square miles here, and it's probably about a hundred fifty feet above sea level, I understand that. You know, when you lived up north, we never had it snow, never snowed. But every year we ran out of the money for the snowplow. I don't know how that happened, I don't know, it's just crazy. But, for example, quickly, that is, one of the administrators down at the veterans' gym, he lives on Granada, and I asked him, I says, uh, how you guys doing? He says, uh, I'm moving, moving out. I says, why? I says, well, our yard floods all the time, nothing's being done. And so I talked with Mike Curley about it, and he says, well, we've been down there, we've been cleaning drains, we're doing everything else. So I think it'd probably be a good- So I think it probably be a good idea, really, to get Dale, in fact, exactly what he's going to do, because these people down there, you know, they're really fed up with a lot of problems. I sympathize. Whether we have a little bit of water on Columbus, it's because it's low, I understand that, very low priority, but I understand and I sympathize with these other people that have drainage problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on, I could tell, you have that inquiry mind look. No further public comment? No further public comment, okay? Any more board? Meeting's adjourned.